We're live now.
We're live.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, May 20th, 2021. We are obviously using Zoom technology, so all of our votes will be by roll call vote. I believe we have all members of this school committee here. I'm sorry, I don't see them all on my screen. No, I believe we're missing Mary Morgan, but I'm sure she will be joining us soon. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV TV. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is public participation. I will just check in the attendees. If you are here to speak, if you could just raise your hand. Okay, first we'll recognize Indiana Troop. Bob, if you could let Indiana Troop in to speak.
Hello.
Hi, Indiana.
Hi. So I don't want to steal Emily's thunder, but I'm on here tonight to speak on behalf of Wareham High School, DECA, and just invite all of you and also the Wareham community to our tailgating auction fundraiser this upcoming Sunday. We're really excited, really happy to be doing it even in these COVID times, but we're doing it very safely, taking lots of precautions. And we just wanted to invite you all to that. You can purchase tickets online. We've made it very easy to do through a reservation form, and you can do that by going to www.warehamedca.com. Ms. Bakayelki already purchased it, so we're excited to see you there, and we'd love to have any other or any of you guys join us as well, but thank you all.
Thanks for not pointing out the trouble that I had with the online shopper, but I couldn't figure out that online ticketing thing.
That was my subtle jab with the simple form. Thank you all.
All right, thanks for being here.
Of course.
All right, see. And Bob, if you would allow Bridget Kearns in to speak?
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I came tonight because I had some issues over the last two weeks that I wanted to bring forth for the public to be aware of and to understand what processes it took to find a resolution, which were quite difficult. So about two weeks ago on May 7th, it came to our attention that the school was using backpack sprayers at the end of the lunch period to disinfect tables while the children were still in the room. We reached out to the school to request the MSDS for what chemical was being sprayed, as it's our understanding that this is not a safe practice in occupied spaces. We were told to call the superintendent's office to request this. So to make our request clear, since we were being redirected, we decided to email Dr. Shaverhood, as well as Mr. LaFavor and Mrs. Cote with our specific request. We were looking for the MSDS of the chemical being sprayed, the person or agency who was guiding the school, that this is a safe practice in an occupied space, a reason why there's not another means of cleaning without overexposing children to unnecessary chemicals that could potentially lead to health issues. We also asked that this practice be paused until we could sort this out, because I had no idea what was being sprayed. It could have been something non-toxic. This is not my area of expertise. We are almost two weeks later, and I still have received not one single response to that initial email, not even an acknowledgement that they got it. After our own research and consultation with an OSHA-trained family member, we are now under the impression that this form of disinfection should not be used in an occupied space. Typically requires some level of ventilation. There's a specific amount of time required prior to reoccupying the space, but we couldn't be sure what was going on unless the school was willing to share any information with us. I will follow up for the school committee members, the CDC guidance regarding the safe use of disinfectants, so that you can come up to speed with what I understood at this time. So the following week, on the 11th, after no response, I reached out from the school. I reached out to the Board of Health. Bob Ethier agreed to call the superintendent's office himself, because he thought it was a reasonable request and that we could resolve this pretty easily if this information was shared. He called me back and said that my child had misinformed me, that they were he was told by that office that they were not using backpack sprayers, that they were using a spray bottle with a diluted bleach solution to wipe down the tables, and he would get me that MSDS as soon as he got it. I reminded him that we had already had confirmation from the middle school that they were using backpack sprayers. He said he would get me that, but what I got was an email, a forwarded email from Dr. Shaverhood, saying that they were using Dawn detergent and to clean and the backpack sprayer to disinfect, but no MSDS. The following day, on the 12th, I reached out to Mr. LaFavor and Mrs. Cote, who were understandably busy and could not talk to me. But because this is now a significant safety concern, and I'm being stonewalled, I felt like I had to take the next reasonable steps. And I reached out to Desi. My family member reached out to her liaisons at the Department of Public Health and the Department of Labor Services regarding significant safety hazards. I did hear from Mrs. Cote later that day via email and phone call, who tried to reassure me that this was a safe practice that they were doing, and that the chlorine was the chemical that is used in dishwasher tabs and in drinking water. However, what I wanted to impress upon her was that the application is different. So how you're using these things, their concentration, I don't know if this is okay to be used. And then a backpack sprayer is aerosolizing this chemical that can be inhaled, absorbed, and potentially ingested. After speaking with Mrs. Cote, I again asked that this, if we could just pause this until we could resolve this, because I always prefer to resolve these things internally. I have been a champion for this at the school district, and I work really well with the administrators, but she was told she could not pause this at my request. She was being told she could not. So feeling like I had no choice, I had to move forward with a formal complaint to Desi. And their liaison, George, who really didn't understand what I was talking about, initially wanted to screen this out, because he felt it wasn't in Desi's responsibility to oversee the school's cleaning practice, but it was DPH. And he felt that the method was to, the school chooses, was in their discretion. So, but what I have pushed back with George was that my concern is not that the school chose a cleaning process versus a disinfection process, but that the disinfection process they're using may be erroneous and how they're applying it. So I'm just going to share a little bit from the CDC guidance, and I will share this in email to all of you. So it says on the CDC, if sprayers or foggers are to be used, they're to be used with the appropriate PPE when rooms are not occupied, with extreme caution if using around food preparation areas or where children's play. If you use a sprayer or fogger, only the person applying it wearing the appropriate PPE should be in the room. Some people, such as children with, or people with asthma, are more vulnerable to certain chemicals. In dining and food preparation areas or where the children spend time, safety risks are greater. Use extreme caution if you choose to use a sprayer or fogger in dining or food preparation areas. The aerosolized disinfectant could land in areas where the chemical may contaminate food preparation services or food, or such things as the children's water bottles, which they are going to drink from later. Using a liquid spray bottle or a wipe disinfectant gives you more control over what, where the disinfectant goes. So this is where I'm drawing my information from, from the CDC guidance. So I just want you to, so that everybody, I'll send it all to you, but just so you're kind of up to speed. On the 13th, the day after I was told that they could not pause this practice, my son told me that he didn't observe anybody spraying in the cafeteria and hasn't since that day. Last night, when I reached out again to the school, I was informed they had not stopped spraying, that they are continuing to spray, but might, not that my son has observed. But they did, as of yesterday, stop, because there was a change in Desi guidance that said they're only required to do this one time per week. It very specifically asked if they, that it was not at all in response to my complaints that I have now brought forward to multiple state agencies. And, and I was told not at all, that because the practice is safe, it is only stopped because of the change in the requirement by Desi. However, I got a call from the Department of Labor Services today. And what they're telling me is that the school said that they have changed their protocol to wait till students are not in the room and out of sight, that the staff have been changed. I'm sorry, the staff have been properly trained in the procedure, because the procedure itself was not the correct procedure. And I have placed a FOIA request to the Department of Labor Services to have all communications, including the MSDS, sent to me. As a parent, I really need to feel confident that when I send my children to school, that they are safe. When I have a safety concern and I bring it to the school for clarification, I feel that it is a reasonable request. It is very confusing to me why there would be such a lack of transparency in reassuring me that this is indeed a safe practice. Who is looking out for our children's safety? I understand that everyone is under intense pressure to provide a safe environment, and that we are incorporating strategies that are intended to mitigate a virus. But what happens when our efforts lead to other health harms? I have been a champion of this district and have always had a good relationship with teachers, administrators, and I am blown away that this simple alert of a possible safety issue took two weeks, hours of my time and formal complaints to multiple agencies to resolve. To be clear, I have the utmost confidence in Mr. LaFavor, Mrs. Cote. I have been a very squeaky wheel this year, and Mrs. Cote has met every single, met my concerns every single time promptly and thoroughly. I believe we have a bigger concern and a pattern of a lack of transparency coming from the top down that favors damage control over what is in the best interest of our children. That's a lot. So this brings me to my other concern. I need a little breath here. That is a serious concern, and I really feel like I'm disappointed in how this played out, because I, my, my interest is only in the safety of the kids and that I can go to work and not have to worry about what's happening at school. And this week demonstrated to me that I have to be on my tiptoes and hovering, and that's not who I want to be. But, and I feel like this is, this could have been really easily resolved, but was stonewalled at every corner and every attempt I made to reasonably resolve this. And maybe it was an error in a staff member that wasn't trained properly, but I feel like a conversation, an open conversation could have really got, you know, got through this. But that brings me to my other concern, which is not news to any of you, because I've made myself clear from the beginning. I have very specific concerns regarding both safety and efficacy of prolonged mask use in our children. There is no scientific evidence published before 2020 that demonstrates that cloth or surgical masks offer protection against respiratory viruses. There has never
Sorry, I'm just going to stop you right there, and not because I don't want to hear what you have to say, but we're just, we're, the time limit for public participation is loosely two minutes, so we're, we're way up over that. So is, would it be fair to ask you to email us the, your concerns about mask wearing, because we have discussed this in the past, and you know, as you know, the school district is, as far as with mask wearing, is following directives from the CDC, from Desi, from the Commonwealth of Masks.
Yes, I do know that, but I also know that you all are in a position that you create policy or vote on things or decide things. And I really feel strongly that if you were going to follow that guidance, that you are fully informed of both the benefits and the health harms. And the, and, and the guidance that's being issued is only pulling forward the benefit or the purported benefit, and that you're going to have to do a little more digging to understand the health harms. So I had shared that there was going to be a webinar. It has been postponed. I believe it's going to be rescheduled next week, and I will absolutely share that with you all again, because I don't think that the end of this school year is going to be the end of this. I think that, and if you can guarantee me that, I will not even, you have I have confident you can't guarantee me that. So that's why I'm still bringing this forward, because I feel like if you were in a position to be voting to whether my child needs to smother themselves or not, that you need to be aware of the health harms, and there's no risk assessment done of the harms, and that is sad. And I think it's really important that we understand that and that everybody understands what other potential harms we're doing to our kids by continuing with this practice. Again, I'm looking out for their safety, and as this is not, masking is not an FDA-approved procedure. It's actually emergency use authorization. That means it's an experiment. And that's not me saying that that is how the government lists it. And so if it's an experiment, we should have the right to refuse, and participation in education should not be a course coercion. So I will email you. I can, I'm certainly, I have study upon study that I'm happy to email you. It's a lot of stuff. If you want to share whatever things that support your position, I'm happy to read that. I've spent a lot of time, and it will be an overwhelming amount. That's why I want to start with the webinar.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. And I will just ask if there are any other members who have any questions of Bridget or anything about what she stated? No, Jeff?
I just want to say that having come from the healthcare field, we had hundreds and hundreds of facilities, and the, the availability of MSDS, and people hate acronyms, so material safety, material safety data sheets, for those people who weren't familiar with that term, is, the availability of those is common practice. It's certainly common practice in healthcare facilities, and it should be, and by law, it should be common practice in, 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 in any occupied space. So I am quite sympathetic about any parent wanting to get a material safety data sheet. So I just wanted to put that on record, and, and I admire Bridget for her passion and wanting to be here and, and talking about what matters to her as a parent.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Yes, Bridget, we do appreciate you coming, and I'm sorry that I cut you off, but I think if you share that by email, I think that would be, that would be probably more beneficial, because we'll have it in the email, and you will share that information about the webinar.
I will, and if, if anybody, I would, I would appreciate it if any of you would respond to my concerns with what, what we are going to do, you know, moving forward, because I just feel like this, parents should not have to go through this to get a resolution. And so how do we change that? Like, how do we make an action plan that parents can be included in all of these decisions or conversation about these decisions? So I'd appreciate a response, and I will happily send over emails.
Oh, sorry, April has her hand. Go ahead, April.
So I do applaud your, your passion for all of this, and I do think that a lot of this this year and with the end of last year has been a huge learning curve for all of us. And I know that CDC guidelines are ever-changing, and for every one study that says one thing, there's another study that contradicts it, and I feel that that's the case in most, most things, actually. So I mean, I'm definitely interested in reading what you have to say in your emails and the, the studies that you have found and where you're getting your information. I also know that a lot of the nurses and the staff of the school have been, you know, the, the flu numbers, there was no cases. And so, I mean, whether masks are efficient for certain things, I know that I wear one for 13 hours a day at work. I'm surrounded by aerosol products and chemicals all day, and I've had much less throat irritation, much less things like that from all of the chemicals that I use on a day-to-day basis, and I haven't been sick. We've had no illnesses in the salon, so I have a heart condition and asthma. So I know that breathing in them can be tough and almost claustrophobic for some people, but my, me personally, I have seen the, the benefit of having to wear it. So I don't know, you know, if that, if it's, if all of the data and everything is, is personal opinion, where the, what it comes from or whatever, but I am definitely always interested to, to get more information. But I, I don't, I think it's just been such a, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't situation all year with following guidance coming from Desi and from the CDC and from the governor and things changing constantly. So I do appreciate your diligence and trying to be on top of it.
Thank you. I appreciate that you're open-minded to, to learning new information. And again, science has never settled, so it's hard, and that's why when you're dealing with these things and you're dealing with medical interventions, you really need to have a, a personal choice. So where you find a benefit and your illnesses are less, that's great. But my family doesn't experience illnesses very frequently with or without masks, so there really was no change for us. So those are my personal experiences that aren't that relevant, but it should be my personal choice as to whether I wear one or don't wear one. And I work in healthcare, so again, it's, I'm in the setting in which I'm wearing much more, you know, I'm wearing more advanced PP. I'm wearing respirators. I'm wearing other things as well in my line of work. So it's not that I'm, you know, I'm new to this. So I'm happy to share all of the studies I have and the webinar. And like I said, any feedback I can get on how we can do better as a district to make sure our communication pathways are clear would be great.
Okay, thank you, Bridget. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, I'm just going to look to see if there's anyone else who would like to join for public participation. I don't believe there is. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is good news. Does anyone want to share some good news? Kevin, go ahead.
Sure, I wanted to recognize two Wareham High School sophomores, James Pinkham and Kinsey Navarro, who were selected to be representatives from Wareham High School to the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Foundation Seminar. And that's been an organization that's been around for decades. And they both described their experience as being incredible, fantastic. They got to listen to leaders from around the country and learn about leadership and the importance of collaboration as being good leaders. And James, just to give you an idea, is a member of the Viking Theater Company. He's an Honor Society member and AP student. Kinsey is a first-degree black belt in karate who teaches to younger kids. She takes IB English and is also in the Honor Society, and they really represented Wareham very well and got a lot out of the experience.
Thanks, Kevin. Go ahead, Jeff.
I wanted to thank the superintendent and the principal and the athletic director for a very successful start to the spring athletic season and for jumping on the recommendation of the governor and the MIAA so that our kids didn't have to wear masks for our opening, certainly matches, and that included the tennis team, slightly biased. We won 5-0, so we're, we're off to a good start. But the bottom line is, I think the, the season has, has started off very well, and you'll be happy to know what I said to the tennis team, which is made up of 12 wonderful high school kids. Is there anything they would change about the education that's going on in the high school? And there was only one thing they would change, and that is, do you think Mr. Wilson could be a little less tough? So they're getting a great education and they love it.
Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead, April.
I was just piggybacking on what Jeff had said about the, the start to the spring sports season. It is great to see so many kids off and doing what they love to do and what they weren't able to do last year. I know that the track team had their first meet on Tuesday and did fairly well, from what I understand, and they do have another one on Saturday. I know that sometimes the right-after-school meets are tough for families and people to be able to attend, but they are, their meet is at Born, so I know that if, if people are, you know, able to watch some of our kids do some really great things on the track team, that they have a meet at 10 o'clock on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, today is Emily's last meeting as a student rep, and I just want to thank her for all of her contributions, how much we've enjoyed having her with us this past two years. So thank you, and we wish you the very best.
I'm really disappointed.
That she's leaving?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't even, I, when they said you were graduating, I could, didn't believe it. Like, time has gone by so fast.
I can't believe it either.
You will be missed. You will
Like a burst of sunshine every other Thursday night.
So I just had a couple of things on my list of good news. One, Indiana already talked about the DECA auction that's happening on Sunday. That's been going on for decades, as far as I know, and I'm really glad that they were able to kind of reinvent it this year and, and bring it back in person, and so I bought my ticket. Yesterday, I did get to attend the first Unified Track Meet of the Year for Wareham High School. So Unified Track is a team that combines athletes with and without disabilities, and they compete against and with each other, and it is, just makes your whole day better going to Unified Track Meet. So that started yesterday. And I did get to see some of the artwork that the students at DECA did around Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and they were so cute, and you know, some of them wrote, "My teacher is kind. My teacher is honest. My teacher is nice." And some wrote, "My teacher is weird in a good way," which is so cute. And then they sum it all up by saying, "My teacher is the best." So I just hope that every teacher, paraprofessional, every staff person in Wareham feels appreciated. You know, that they're weird in a good way. Okay, so we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the report from our student representative, Emily.
So I don't believe anyone mentioned this yet, the DECA tailgating auction this Sunday. But reserve your tickets. Next up, the Wareham High School Key Club thanks the onset Bay Center for giving kayaking lessons and a service learning opportunity to clear trails and seed wildflowers on Wicket Island. So the Key Club highly recommends this program for all Wareham youth over the summer. And on to senior news, the last day of school being tomorrow for us seniors, all senior end-of-the-year activities are coming up fast. So prom takes place at the Pawtucket Museum this Saturday from 5:30 to 10:30, which is directly after the promenade at the field. And the next few, like, few weeks hold senior exit interviews, the senior car parade, awards night, that goes for sports, too, the senior send-off, and the grand finale graduation on Friday, June 4th, at 6:30 PM. So fortunately and unfortunately, this senior stuff does apply to me. So tomorrow's the last day that I'll walk out of those doors in Chase of the Summer, and I really, I couldn't have asked for a better high school experience. I want to thank each and every peer, teacher, and staff member that have made these four years the best they really could be. I can say with confidence that I'm ready for the promising future ahead, thanks to many inspiring individuals that I've met along the way. So part of my many meaningful and unique experiences here in Wareham was being able to be a part of these meetings since sophomore year. It's a long time. So a final thank you to the school committee for having me and allowing me to be the student representative. I am so, so grateful for this time, and thank you all so much.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you for your, your updates, your input. Your honest input was really very much appreciated.
You have big shoes to fill. It's going to be hard to fill those shoes. Nice job.
Mary, go ahead.
I totally agree, and I'm just curious, what are your future plans?
So I'm going to go to UMass Samhurst for marketing, and then hopefully for grad school, like, you know, once I keep up those really good grades for undergrad, I'll be able to go to a grad school, you know, like a really good one for a lot less money. So, yeah.
That's a good plan.
Yeah.
That's an awesome plan, actually.
I really want to incorporate, you know, further community service and whatnot, since I've been in Key Club for so long, and just like pursue any, like, leadership roles that I can, and just be just as actively involved in college as I am in high school.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, next on the agenda are the minutes of our meeting on April 29th, 2021. Does anyone have any questions or changes to those minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Kevin?
I'm excusing myself from the vote. I wasn't
I'm excusing myself from the vote. I wasn't at the last meeting.
Right. Is this the meeting you were not at? Yes, sorry. Mary?
Yes.
April? Did she say yes? Jeff?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll abstain.
Okay, and myself, yes. So 302. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the obsolete furniture.
Okay. Can you see this?
We can't. Yeah.
Okay, so here's the obsolete furniture. It's coming from the middle school. And I would ask the committee to please vote to deem this obsolete.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I'm surprised the gym floor mats are actually not just simply worn out and to be thrown away.
I think they're pretty bad.
All right, so I'll make a, I'll ask for a motion to approve this list of obsolete furniture.
Second.
Roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And myself.
Thank you.
Next is the amended school calendar.
Yes, I would ask the committee to please vote to change the school calendar for next year. There's been a fifth workday added. It would be October 7th, which would make the last 180th day of school June 16th and that 185th day, June 23rd. So I ask the committee to please make this adjustment in the school calendar.
Some moved.
Second.
Call Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. 500.
Thank you.
Next is the Summer Care Sale Presentation. Ms. Fondulus, good evening.
Good evening. So we're very excited after 14 months of being all after school programming being remote. We're very excited that we're gonna be in person this summer. So we will have our summer programming a little different. We used to always just be at the middle mine at site and then at the high school, but we're gonna spread out. So our pre-K to grade two will stay at Deccus. Middle will stay at middle mine and then high school. The CARE, which is the 21st century grants, which provides a bulk of our money. So we will have programming from 8:30 to 2:30, Monday through Thursday, for six weeks starting July 6th through August 12th. We will provide transportation and lunch as we usually do. There'll be less field trips this summer, but we still have great activities planned and some local field trips. Also, at the Deccus School, there'll be the CARE program. We also are in our fourth season of the Boost. And the Boost is a skill-based curriculum that brings the students up to grade level curriculum. And it's always been kindergarten and we've been able to expand this summer. So we will be providing four classes, which will be kindergarten, kindergarten going into first grade, second grade, third grade. So that'll all be taking place over at Deccus. At middle, we're gonna have the CARE program as well. And we're very excited because we were awarded the After School Out of School Time Grant that we could use the money for a morning component that was an accelerated summer academy for at-risk kids due to COVID. And we were awarded that money for both middle and the high school. So we will be having approximately six classes going on at middle and probably about the same at the high school. And those students will have their concentrated academics in the morning. And then our great partner Buzzards Bay Coalition, they also wrote the same grant in partnership with Wareham Public Schools. So in the afternoon, they're going to be providing enrichment over at the Onset Bay Center, where they'll be doing the kayaking, sailing, beach exploration. And then our morning time with Buzzards Bay Coalition, our CARE students will have the opportunity over the course of the six weeks to do programming at the beach, as well as our Mass Audubon Society, who we have been partnering with, will continue this summer on their property off of Great Neck Road. We also, Buzzards Bay Coalition, has given eight slots to eight of our high school students that apply, that they can do an internship through the whole six weeks as sort of a counselor where they are going to learn how to sail. And then at the end of the six weeks during the school year, if they volunteered approximately 20 hours, then they will be hired by the Buzzards Bay Coalition next year as a paid position to be a junior counselor in sailing. So that's exciting too. So we have a lot of, a lot of good things happening this summer. We're glad it's in person. Unfortunately, we're not gonna probably be able to service as many students as we usually do. Just to give you an idea, we sent the email out yesterday morning for the K through seven CARE program. And in less than 24 hours, I've had like 60 emails with registrations. So parents are looking forward to it. So that's what I got.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Fondulus? Jeff?
Jane, so some percentage of what you described, and I love the program that you described, Jane. So thank you for that. But some percentage of the programs are specifically designed to help those kids who have not thrived over this last 12 months. Is that a fair statement?
For the accelerated summer academy, yes. That was, that grant was put out specifically because of COVID. It was extra, extra funding that came out. The CARE program, our selective population has always been students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and students who are at risk academically.
So I would just want to focus on the, what'd you call it, the accelerated academy?
Well, it's the After School Out of School Grant that came out with new money that we could do an accelerated summer academy as a morning component, as long as you still tied in enrichment activities in the afternoon.
Okay, so if, of all the, when you think of the numbers and of all the kids who have struggled and perhaps might even be at risk for entering the next grade level unprepared for the next, for that next grade level, are we able to accommodate all of those kids who would want to be in that program and need to be in that program?
Those are the students that Ms. Cote at middle school and Scott at the high school, that they've compiled their lists of the students that really need to be in this program. And yeah, we were able to at least do six classes at each school. Understood, understand that this year, unlike any other summer, most of our staff want to work full-time, all four days, the whole six weeks. This summer, we have many staff that might want to just work two full days or some mornings. They need a break, so staffing is maybe a little less. But we're gonna have six classes. So those six classes at middle school could be basically 90 students that would be in that accelerated academy.
So I, I'm not sure how to conclude from what you said, whether that 90 is, is that 75% of the kids that need it? I mean, or is that plenty of capacity for those? And is it a carrot and stick approach? Meaning, are these, do some of these kids realize that if they don't take this program, they might be held back? I mean, how is that being handled?
Yes, they, it's, it's a program that if they do it and they succeed with it, there'll be assessments, pre and post-assessments, that they can then pass in the next grade. Many of these students, if they don't do this program, are in jeopardy of being retained.
So I guess that makes sense. So I guess the, my final question is, if someone wants to be in this program because they do not want to be held back and they're motivated to do well, et cetera, can we tell parents, "Your child will, we will have capacity for that child"?
To the, to the point of what we, you know, I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Cote is not here this evening, but I think that her numbers for the entire school, five through seven, were around about 1:30. So if we can take 90 of those students, I think we're hitting most that would want to come.
But what, but what you are telling me then is there are going to be some kids who don't want to be held back, are prepared to work hard all summer so they don't get held back, but may not, but may be held back because the capacity to assist them doesn't exist. Is that, am I reading you correctly?
Oh, I think, I think between both the accelerated summer academy, you have to also understand that the CARE program has an academic component too. It's not just enrichment. So we do academic programming, it's just project-based, hands-on. So some of those students who might be at risk because of COVID but aren't quite failing, they would be in our CARE program. So in the CARE program, we can take, again, probably about 90-plus students. So in the, just in the middle school, we could provide programming for at least 180 students.
All right, so you're saying between the two programs, you think we'll be able to meet the needs of our kids?
I do.
Thank you. That's, that's really what I was getting at. I appreciate it. Thank you, Jane.
Yep.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to ask for a clarification because we're working on summer programs in my district. And I'm just curious, are this, do schools providing for just regular? I know the CARE program does this for regular kids. But are they providing beyond that for the kids in the summer?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Mary. What is?
So I, I mean, I'm very familiar with the CARE program, as you know. But with the COVID money that's coming in, in our district anyways, I mean, I don't know what's going on in Wareham. But in our district, we're getting extra money to provide programming for students within the district. At every school, most of our schools in Fall River are providing summer programming. So I'm.
Yes, and one, one was just posted today on the DUCY website, which is, again, it's an extension of the ASOS-T grant.
Yeah.
Where they have more funding. And, you know, Andrea and I were talking about that this morning and we've emailed some staff members, so we're working on that as well. But clearly, every grade level is gonna have summer programming.
Okay, I mean, that, that's what I, I figured. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
April, go ahead.
Hi, so these, the grants that were, have come, that were COVID-specific. Now, I know that you've run, you know, sale and the CARE program and things like that pre-COVID. Those are things that you guys have run as a, as a great program prior to all of this. Is the grant monies piggybacking on what was budgeted for those programs initially? Or was, or are they designed for a separate set of students? And is that adequately staffed for that particular portion of that program as opposed to encompassing it with the existing programs that you offer?
No.
I was, I was just going to say that we are, we have great programming in place and we're fortunate that we have that programming. However, now we're able to extend and add on to that programming. So for example, Boost, we did for K and we did that for two years and then we added one. Now we can go all the way up to grade three where we wouldn't have necessarily been able to do that in the past. So what we're doing is we're taking and expanding and making more time and hours available for these particular programs that we didn't have before.
Yeah, and again, not to confuse everybody, there's two, in the Office of Beyond School Time, we have two ASOS-T grants. One is the 528, which is what Andrea was talking about. It's, it's to enhance already existing summer programs and to expand. The ASOS-T 530 that came out was strictly for, because of COVID, to be able to do these accelerated summer academies over the course of six weeks at both the middle and the high school. And the grant that came out today is more about just doing like a one-week accelerated academy for certain grade levels, rising, you know, rising 10th graders, rising 8th graders. And it's just an intensive 20-hour, one-week academy. And that's the funding that was released today, or the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. First, thanks for getting those grants and working towards securing them for the district. Secondly, you mentioned staffing might be an issue. Are you reaching out to other towns or other faculties? I mean, what are you doing in order to try to make sure we have enough staff to run these programs?
Oh yeah, no, we've, we've done outreach and we have, I'm, I've got enough staff. And we also, we're fortunate that we've got college interns. And this year, we've had the opportunity to post at the high school for high school students to have a job where they have to go through a whole interview process and get recommendations from teachers. And so we're looking forward to having some high school students on board, which will help in, again, depends on what July 6th brings with the CDC guidelines. But they, I'm looking at my high school students and my college interns in helping out when the kids are outside.
And just a last question, and I think Jeff alluded to this already. Are we making it mandatory for those students that either did not perform well, did very little work over by Zoom? Are we mandating that they attend and holding, I guess, retention?
So the, the program at the middle school, Mrs. Cote has made it clear in the letter that they are mandated to do this accelerated summer academy, or they will not pass to next grade. On the high school level, it's a little bit different in that they would earn credit back so that they could go to the next, because they go on credits.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. And every single one of my questions has been asked. But I would just say, you know, thank you, as Kevin said, thank you for, for securing this funding. We're really fortunate to have so many opportunities and the partnerships that you've, that you've worked on. It's, the kids are really fortunate to have this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, I look forward to hearing how it goes.
It's gonna be fun. Yeah.
It sounds like it. All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And so we'll move on to the Summer ESY Program Presentation from Melissa Fay. Good evening.
Hello, everybody. Mine isn't quite as exciting as Jane. We're gonna, yeah. We're gonna be servicing, hopefully, it's looking like more students than we have in the past. And I think, again, it is because of COVID. I think the pandemic has put some strain on some of our students with special needs and created the need to have kind of some different thoughts about our programming this summer. We're gonna be running a five-week program for our students and a six-week program for our Autism Spectrum Disorder students, our ASD classrooms. And we will have a full battery of services in there. Our BCBA's, speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and our employment specialist will also be working with us this summer, which is exciting. We will be in person. We're gonna be operating Monday through Thursday during that timeframe. And we will be located in the mine at wing of the middle school for the summer. We will, this summer, hold on one second because my mother is calling and she just had surgery. So give me just one second, I'm sorry. Okay, my husband's got it. We will be operating with our vocational employment specialist this year. And so we're very excited about that because this will be our first summer with her, working with our transition students. And we're gonna get, hopefully get back out into the community. So they're gonna be, our students will be able to have community experiences, have some work experiences, have some internship opportunities for the summer. So that's gonna be really exciting for that 18 to 22 transition group. And then we're also through a grant this summer at the high school, through the 274 Program Improvement Grant, we're gonna be running a therapeutic learning center, social-emotional program at the high school that's gonna be completely grant-funded by the 274. And so that's going to be a grant that will allow us to run programming for that program and give those students an opportunity to be in the high school, work with the employment specialist as well, but also have access to a lot of different fun and exciting opportunities and also counseling. I don't have any of those. Counseling and other services. And I'm sorry, my mom just had surgery, so I'm like playing. And I'm sorry, my mom just had surgery, so I'm like playing wet nurse and also trying to do this. So I apologize.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Melissa?
Yes, go focus on your mom.
Thank you.
Oh, she has a speedy recovery.
Thank you. She has her second shoulder replacement on the same shoulder, so it's not, it's not fun.
No, my mom had that. It was quite painful, so I wish her well.
Mary, did you have something?
I guess, but now you're making me feel guilty.
My husband, Mary, my husband's got it. He just went down.
Okay.
She was not.
I just want clarification on why, I don't know, it's just all technical, I guess. But why an assistant principal for early education instead of just an early childhood coordinator?
So I, I think that it was a bigger discussion with a lot of different people about what was needed for that position. So I can't really speak to that right now, but I'd be happy once we kind of settle into what we're, what our plans are to discuss it further. So I think Bethany has kind of taken the lead on that position as it is, falls under her jurisdiction in her building. And so once we kind of start looking at candidates, I think we'll have a better, thank you, a better opportunity to, to explain that a little bit more.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Melissa, I just have one quick question, similar to what Jeff asked before. Are you confident that you'll be able to service all the students who are in need?
So we typically have the same group of students. The good thing about extended school year services is they're pretty well-defined by, by regulation and law. So we're providing services to students who experience significant regression. And we do so much data collection and progress monitoring in our district that it's super easy to track that data with our students. So the amount of work that our teachers and our department chairs and Dr. Schwam has put in place for our, you know, for us to measure outcomes for our students is so strong that it's pretty clear for us every year who requires that level of service. This year's a little bit different, because the department has put out information about COVID compensatory services. So students that may have not received services or may not have benefited fully from services because of the closures of school and the lack of complete and total in-person time for the whole, for that entire period of time, we have to, as a team, revisit each one of those students. So we do have more students this year than we typically would. And we're also running a boot camp for a week that is about three times the size that it normally is to kind of catch any of our students who not only have, are having significant regression, but were impacted greatly by the pandemic and by not being able to be in person in school that entire time. So I think we, we've done a really great job. We've got, we already have all of our letters out. Our staff has already been hired. We've got, we were fortunate, like Jane, we were able to kind of get a couple of college interns. We're gonna take on a couple of high school students to do some volunteer stuff with us as well, from like mask breaks and, and outdoor activities. So I think we've got, we're catching, I would say, at least ninety-five percent of who I would like to catch. And I think that all of our programs together are catching everybody.
What percentage of your population has returned in person?
We have everybody back now, with the exception, I probably have about six students out of all of our in-district students who are still home remote due to health reasons. And either health reasons that they have or health reasons within their family, like family members going through some kind of autoimmune disease or treatment for a cancer or something like that, that is keeping them home. In our out-of-district population, we have two students that are still remote. So it's a very small percentage of our students that have chosen to remain remote. And I think our, our biggest population that came back is, right away, that we were very excited to have back, was our, all of our substantially separate programs with the highest level of need. So they came back almost completely as soon as they possibly could. So that was really promising. And again, there were a few that we had that just couldn't because of health reasons. But we, we are excited to welcome almost everybody back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have anything for Melissa? All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the accelerated program for the MSBA funding.
Okay, so tonight, I'm here to ask the committee to vote for us to move the, into the accelerated program. This would be just the application process. Just because we move into it does not mean that we'll be accepted. It certainly is our hope, though, that they will pick up these projects and help us. I was at the Board of Selectmen last Tuesday. They voted to move forward. And if you choose to vote, then we have the votes needed to move the applications into the MSBA application process. So the first one is the middle school roof replacement. And just to give a little background, the middle school has approximately fifty-three-hundred square feet of single-ply rubber membrane roofing. It's rapidly aging and is in dire need of replacement and it, due to the various damage that's been done over the many years. If you recall, we had seagulls damaged the roof and tore a patch, tore one of the patches which flooded the interior of the building. This has happened twice in the last three years. We anticipate that the cost would be approximately one point five million. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer about the roof. The second one would be the boiler replacement. It's a staged boiler system. They have six boilers. These are all original to the building, so they're over, they're coming on thirty years old. And they're to the point now where it's very difficult to find replacement parts. It's, it's pretty essential that we move forward with this project. So you would vote to do this. What we would have to do is to read into the minutes a, a phrase that's mandated by MSBA, and I can give this to Jamie, and we can have it added.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Yes, I have no question about the boilers. And I suspect we're going to be getting some efficiencies out of replacing them as well, meaning lower our operating costs. And I'm, I'll take it for granted that the need for the, for the roof is, is there. My question is, is, was this roof a hundred percent replaced when we did the renovations? The major renovations, the school building project? And I'm, I'm blanking as to when, what year that was, but I'm guessing it was probably something like two thousand and five or thereabouts.
No, it was not completely replaced. There are parts of the, the roof that are newer, but there are other parts that simply are not.
Okay, so the parts that are newer, most roofs have warranties that are well beyond fifteen years. Frequently, they're twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year warranties. Even the newer parts of the roof are failing?
There's substantial damage throughout the building. We have, because of the problems that we've had in the last several years, we have the roof inspected on a bimonthly basis. And there's always holes that need to be patched.
Wow. Yeah, so I get, it sounds, it sounds like it may even be beyond the scope of the warranty if it's being damaged by extraterrestrials. Okay, just curious. Thank you.
April?
So would the proposal for the new roof be replaced with a more seagull deterrent type of material? Or would they just replace the roof with the existing type of, of membrane that is, is there now? Or would they upgrade to something more durable?
Yeah, we've had this question when we were putting on the new roof at the elementary, and it would be substantially thicker as the new roof over at the elementary is. It needs to be Cohog-proofed, because they drop the Cohogs on it to break. So we need something that will withstand the Cohogs.
Only in New England would you have to have a Cohog retardant roof to, to, to go through for the MSBA.
Right.
Thank you.
And there is such a thing, like you said, they're doing that over at the elementary school. Is that true?
It's thicker.
This is the whole middle school roof, not, so the whole thing will be the same material, the same?
Right.
Okay. So did you say that you're looking for someone to make a motion with the, this specific wording?
Yes, and I think you have the wording.
Yes. Someone, is it the wording that's inside the box?
It is.
Motion that we have. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Well, no, we need it read in verbatim, April.
Oh, where do I find wording for that?
The wording, it was in our.
I'll be glad to read it if.
Yeah, I can find it, Jeff. So if you would, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. That having convened in an open meeting on, on, let's see, May?
May twenty.
Yeah, except, yeah, this, I guess this is the motion that was made by the Board of Selectmen. So ha- having convened in an open meeting on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of the Town of Wareham, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the Wareham Middle School located at four Viking Drive, Wareham, Massachusetts, a roof replacement, and for Wareham High School located at seven Viking Drive, Wareham, Massachusetts, replace boilers, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Full roof replacement, repair replacement, the single-ply TPO roofing membranes, and is quickly deteriorating from sun and weather exposure and has caused numerous floods. Boiler repair replacement boilers. The boilers are disintegrating from the inside firewalls out. The boilers are all original and over thirty years old and need to be replaced. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the, can the city, town, regional school district, in this case, excuse me, school district, to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Could you repeat that?
So moved.
I think, I think that was the motion. I think we just need a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Next is the report of the business manager, the monthly financial report, and the budget transfers.
Sure. So in your packet, you had the April monthly report, which is reflective of any votes that were taken prior to me running this report. We still continue to, still continue watching it very closely, since it's now May twentieth. We're getting very close to the end of the year for closeout. There's not, nothing that, we've already addressed a couple of things that we were concerned about. These school committee contracted services, which is actually the legal line. And there's really no concerns, because we're watching it extremely closely. So unless anyone has any questions.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I don't have a question. I just have a request. And, and maybe it's, maybe it's difficult from a computer perspective, application perspective. Is there any way to give me subtotals and totals?
Sure.
Is that, because the last thing I want to do, and I suspect any other school committee member wants to do, is micromanage some of these really tiny accounts. But on the other hand, if the subtotal is significantly out of whack, especially, you know, at the beginning of the year, it would be nice to, to see the subtotals and the totals.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the, the next, the other part in your packet is the budget transfers. As you know, as we continue to close the year and monitor, monitor very closely, we, we request transfers all within the LEA budget, so there's no change to the bottom line. It's just moving money from one line to another, so the bot, the bottom line of the general fund stays the same.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Jeff, is your hand up?
Oh, yeah. Yes, I do.
Okay.
So the, what is the definition, what is included in athletics other and athletics contracted?
Athletics contracted is the officials that do, that are not, that don't work for us, the school, they're paid on a ten ninety-nine. And other is for, just what it says, other, anything that doesn't fall into the category. A six, anything that doesn't fall into a four, which is a contracted service, or a five, which is supplies, falls under six, which is other.
Okay, I'm not a huge fan of other unless it's really small. So I'll, I'll have to check to see if other is too big and needs to be broken down, but I'll.
Right. The, that's, that's the, I don't know, you might not have this, but I gave it to school committee, I think, a few months back. The DSC chart of accounts, how they want it set up, and I could send that to you. And you'll see why they, we really need to have an O-six if it doesn't fall into any of the other categories.
I understood, and I'm, I have not questioning for a moment your need for an O-six. It's just more a question of how big the O-six is.
Okay, I get it.
And, and when it, there's a lot of movement of salaries. I'm surprised we have that much flexibility. You know, decas sped power salaries, decas teacher salaries, mine at teachers, deca sped power salaries. Why do we have extra money in those categories? I'm surprised.
For a couple of reasons. People might have been on our medical leave that weren't paid for, or someone might have retired or resigned, and we didn't replace them. They could have resigned recently or halfway through the year. And if you remember that, well, I don't think you were, you weren't on the committee when the committee voted to give the teachers their full one, the unit A and B, the, the full one percent plus their step, which they had, when they, when we were in negotiations last year due to COVID and the budget, they had voted to only take one percent going on the sixteenth check, I believe, sixteenth or eighteenth check, and hold, freeze on the steps. So we've been able to do that for them, and they, the school committee voted that several months ago. So that's another reason why you see money being moved around.
That's an excellent explanation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
All set.
Thank you.
So those were my two questions. I had, I had noted that the totals would be really helpful. And as you know, I had asked you earlier about the, the decas sped powers and the money coming out there. And that was the explanation that Christine had given me, so thank you. So you're looking for a vote to approve these transfers? Would anyone like a motion?
So.
Second.
Roll call, April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Our next, we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Hey, so today we have the bill warrants, the payroll I have listed, and the bill warrants I have listed for people to see. I would first ask the committee to please accept the payroll warrants, the two as listed.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved.
Okay, roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Thank you. Now I would ask for approval of the bill warrants, the four as listed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 500.
Thank you. All right, so in the district update, I'm going to share the latest information coming from DESI, important dates, and then just some additional information. So the latest information from the commissioner, the other, yesterday, the commissioner had the phone call, or sorry, Tuesday, the phone call. And so here's just a little couple of items that he has made known. Summer school will be a continuation of the school year. There are no masks for outdoor recess, sports. Adults will need to wear masks if they're unable to have social distancing. And that was great news. And also, if we have outdoor classrooms, our students do not need to wear masks when they go outside. The fall opening, we're expecting more guidance to come in June. But currently, we understand they're asking for no social distancing to occur, but will continue to wear masks. And the information should come out the first of June. We really anticipate there'll be several additions of that. And so right now, we will be planning for no social distancing. We'll be moving furniture back into the classrooms to get ready for a normal fall opening. The commissioner did say that they're looking for districts to set up onsite clinics for students vaccinations. There's been an update in graduation guidance. And attendees and staff are not required to wear masks if outside and with necessary distance. And finally, this is quite exciting for everyone. It will allow the graduates to be handed their diploma and awards. So it's starting to look like school again, so we're quite excited. Some important dates that are coming up. So if you go to the bottom, you'll look, the prom is this Saturday. The senior final exams, the 24th through the 28th. The senior car parade on the 28th begins at 6 o'clock. Athletic awards, June 1st at 6:30. It will be at Spillane Field. The senior send off is June 2nd, and that's where we will have an outdoor send off for our seniors. Our students in the other grades will participate and wish them all good luck. They'll be visiting the middle school, Minnet and Deacon. So we're quite excited about that. Academic awards for seniors, June 3rd at 6 o'clock, again at Spillane Field. And we have two graduations. The first, Wareham High School will be June 4th at 6:30. And alternative program will be at Deacon's under the tent, June 7th at 5 o'clock. So these are some important dates coming in our district. And finally, the transportation enrollment form is online. And June 30th is the deadline. I would certainly urge everyone to fill out the application. Even if your child is not choosing to take transportation, we do ask that you complete the form. If you recall, in the past, we've had the ice cream social for incoming kindergarten students. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that. So instead, they're going to be doing a kindergarten drive-through, where there'll be staff at Deacon's that will be spread out in the parking lot. And there'll be a traffic pattern. And they are inviting our incoming students and their parents to drive and to pick up some books and to meet, see what their staff looks like and see what their school will look like at the very beginning of school. And finally, June 16th is the half day, and we will be out on the other half. So thank you very much, and that completes my report.
All right, Jeff and April have some questions. Go ahead, Jeff.
So first question I have relates to the mask wearing in the fall. But my sense is, listening to you, I should not bother with the question because you expect so many changes between now and then. I should just hold my tongue, so to speak.
Well, if DESI stays true to their pattern, yes, there will be many additions.
Fine, then I'll, so the only other thing I would point out is, spring season, drumroll, athletic season finishes July 3rd. So if we're having athletic awards night, what was it, June 5th or something like that? I, I just hope no, no student is penalized because they're still in the middle of their spring's season.
I'm sure they won't be.
All right, April, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify for the people and parents probably watching, or we decided to waive the transportation fees for the upcoming school year, correct? So parents will not have to worry about paying the transportation fee should they choose to utilize the, the buses that we provide, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the parents had that reminder out there. And I'm definitely excited that we're able to have, you know, graduation. And again, I know that they did everything they could last year to pull it together in the midst of, of everything being crazy. So it will be, you know, great that there, this class's senior week gets to wrap up more traditionally than, than unfortunately last year had to.
Talking about transportation, though, you, you, in the past, you've had a deadline. And if parents didn't get the form in by the deadline, they may not have, the child may not have had a spot on the bus. Is that still the case?
It is, June 30th. So we really urge people to fill the application out ASAP, get it turned in, because we will start assigning buses, making bus routes, and we need that information to be able to do that.
And what has your return been so far? Has it, have you had a good return?
We just opened it today.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, good. Kevin, go ahead.
Just wondering, with the new DESI guidance, we're outdoors and mask wearing, how come we have to do a kindergarten drive-through? Why couldn't we do it more in person?
Well, in the past, they've always, well, we, first of all, we didn't know this was coming. And we had had the plans made. And in the past, it's been the ice cream social. We just weren't comfortable doing that. And had they made these plans a little bit before Tuesday, we probably would have changed this. But we've, things have already been set in motion.
And what was the date for that again? Was it June 5th? It said May 5th on the screen.
Oh, it did, beyond confusion, everyone, then, aren't they? It would be the kindergarten drive, it's June 5th.
So is that a Saturday?
I, yeah, I'm not sure. I don't think so, but.
Okay, well.
We'll, we'll clarify.
Okay, all right. April, did you have another question?
I think I forgot to unlower my hand.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't want to miss you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Schipert. Oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Just, just quickly, I wanted to thank, and I don't really know who to thank. I'll thank the superintendent and maybe my colleagues on this school committee before I got on. The absence of user fees for the athletes was greatly appreciated, so thank you very much.
All right, we'll move to the report of the School Committee, the elementary school building update. So Jeff, we'll look to you for that.
Sure. The good news is we continue to make excellent progress. The, and evidence of that progress is, is probably best described by the fact that we now are on regular power, no more emergency electric power. We've got, now got the gas turned on, and we actually have a generator. And finally, we have water to the building. So those are kind of crucial things if you actually want to operate a building. So I think you should feel really good about that. You should also feel really good about the fact that we continue to have relatively small usage of our contingency. We recently have had no major change requests, which is what the general contractor always makes to the program manager and has to be approved by the architect and ultimately by the technical review committee and sometimes the full school building committee. But that has been minimal as well. And finally, we have had no, no COVID-19 over the last week or so problems. In the past, we had some actually with our project management team. But knock on wood, things seem to be going smoothly. And of course, I look at the, at the tracker of infections in Plymouth County, and we keep getting lower and lower. So I think there's reason for optimism. And the final thing I'll mention is that about 2% of our reimbursement from the state is, is contingent upon something called the LEED certification, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And we are moving in that direction. So A, it saves us money, which everybody loves. And B, especially if you care about the environment, it's going to be environmentally, it's going to meet the gold standard, so to speak, for environmental design and energy conservation. So it's all good, knock on wood, we're getting, getting closer. And pretty soon, it'll be up to the superintendent to decide when to actually open it.
Great news, great news. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff about the project? No, all right, well, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So under Report of the School Committee, I also just wanted to mention that in the packet this week were the new committee assignments. I reached out to every member, hopefully everyone was happy with their committee assignments. I guess that's it about that. And is there any other business?
I just have a question. Now that everything is being lifted per the, you know, the governor as of May 29th, with our last meeting be on June 17th, will that meeting now be in person? Or are we planning on finishing out this particular school year with a Zoom meeting? Or will we be resuming our final meeting for this school year in person?
So as I've mentioned before, I've kind of been pestering the town about when we could possibly go back in person. And I have not heard from them that we are able to go back in person. And we are the June 17th meeting. One of the items on the agenda for that meeting is the presentation of the strategic plan, which usually involves a lot of people. I haven't actually talked to Dr. Schwarm about this, but I just thought that it was a good idea to keep that meeting remote to allow the amount of people that, you know, would need to be there to be there. And again, I haven't heard from the town, you know, that we would be able to meet in person anyway. So if the committee is agreeable to that, we will finish the year, that one meeting on Zoom.
Can I just give the numbers?
Sure, go ahead.
On the steering committee, we have 39 members. And on our student council, we have 40 members. And they're all invited to be participants to some degree.
Zoom it is.
Yeah, just sort of, not that everyone would show up, but they are being invited. So I would love to be able to have as many people who would want to be there, be there. So that would be my choice, I guess.
Yeah, so as much as, you know, I've been hoping to have movies back. And it just made sense to keep that one remote. And then, so I think our first meeting is in August, is August 19th. And of course, we're all planning on that to be in person.
Great, I just figured I'd ask.
No, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you did. So the, yeah, so with that said, our next meeting is June 17th. So before that, though, is town meeting on Saturday, June 12th, 11:00 AM at Deacon's School under the tent. And if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, April?
Yes.
Mary? Kevin?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 500. Thank you, good night, everyone.
Have a good night.